Good evening and welcome. The Monday, September 18th, 2017 Board of Commissioner meeting is now in session. The Reverend Louis Antonucci has been kind enough to give us the invocation and pledge this evening if you could all rise. First, Mr. Antonucci would like to ask us a question.
I just wanted to ask the question, why did the golfer wear two pair of pants to play golf? He was afraid he was going to get a hole in one. But that, you look so serious up there for me. Shall we pray? Father, we thank you for this day and for the blessings that have been ours. You're so good to us. Father, I pray for each one of these men and women on this commission that, Father, you'll give them wisdom. Wisdom to answer the questions and find the right answers that might help each one of us in Currituck County to make it a better place for each one of us to live. Father, again, bless the families that they represent. I pray for each one in this audience, Father, that they will have questions and get answers to them, Father, that you'll just open each mind. Again, we thank you. We ask for wisdom. Bless each one here and the families who represent, for it's in Jesus' name. Amen. Shall we have the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. You may be seated. Moving on, first item this evening, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, will you make a motion for approval?
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public comment. I currently do not have anyone signed up for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak this evening? Seeing no one, I will close the public comment section. Moving on to administrative reports. Linda Atkins from the Corolla Wild Horse Fund will be given a presentation this evening. Welcome, Ms. Atkins.
Good evening. How is everyone? It's not so much a presentation as I just wanted to take the opportunity to say hello and introduce myself and get to know you. I'm the new executive director at the Corolla Wild Horse Fund, and I've had the pleasure of working with Dan Scanlon, and certainly I'm looking forward to working with each of you as we go forward. So I wanted to take a few minutes to come in, say hello, and discuss the Corolla Wild Horse Fund. As you know, we have about 100 wild horses living out in Corolla that we are tasked with overseeing and charged with their future, and so take the opportunity quite seriously to help take care of all of that, and certainly working with the county is paramount. And so I wanted to be able to come in and take the time to reach out and meet each of you. So, no presentation so much as that's what I'd like to get accomplished.
Well, thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions about the fund? And if not, I'm happy to come back. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, Kathy Davidson, the executive director of the Albemarle Commission, is here to give us a presentation this evening.
Good evening, and it's always wonderful to be in Currituck County, a second time in a week, and enjoyed having a luncheon with your volunteers on Friday with many of your commissioners. So, it's always good to be in your presence. So I just want to review a project that has been happening and dialogue has been happening for the last two and a half, almost three years, and that's the look at the Albemarle Commission and its facilities. And our request, while I'm not formally making a request for your support of the project this evening, I want to provide you an overview of it and what options we have looked at. So why are we looking at a new facility? And why would I be here asking for your eventual support? The Albemarle Commission, while we are considered a local government, we do not have taxing authority, and because of that, we cannot issue bonds for debt. So our member governments have to support the commission as you are the taxing authority within our region. We have 10 local county members that would need to support the agreement, and this is a requirement of the local government commission. And so what is the Albemarle Commission? And I know just a few months ago, I was here to discuss the stewardship report of the commission, and I'm going to provide you just a few reminders of what we are and what we do and how we do it. We're the area agency on aging, workforce development, rural planning organization. We're the federal economic development district, and we're also administration that oversees all of these programs. So the AAA or Area Agency on Aging and Senior Nutrition, we provide services under the Older Americans Act, which is a federal act that was just re-adopted last year thanks to Senator Burr. And the AAA plans, develops, and coordinates the delivery of supportive services, nutrition, we support elder rights, caregiver support, and health and wellness programs. Our workforce development, we provide workforce development services as well as training services to the underemployed, the unemployed, and recently laid off individuals, both youth and adults, ranging from the age 14 to seniors. And the Workforce Development Board also helps improve our regional employer's capacity to find and hire well-trained employees. We're also working with our school districts to have career and technical education in the schools as well as having working smart or soft skills training implemented within the schools. We also partner and build a network of partnerships with community partners. Our rural planning organization, we develop long-range transportation plans for the region. We provide transportation-related data to local governments. We develop and prioritize projects for the Strategic Transportation Improvement Program, and we provide a forum for public involvement in the transportation process. The Economic Development District, we serve as the economic development district for the region. We assist local governments in obtaining grants in order to approve the opportunities within the region, and those grants are primarily public infrastructure such as water and wastewater. And then we administer the comprehensive regional economic development strategy, which many of you participated in the survey and public forum for that strategy. Then we also administer a regional revolving loan fund that one of the businesses here, actually two here in Currituck County are recipients of the revolving loan fund. In our administration, we administer and act as the fiscal agent for the programs of the Albemarle Commission. We also act as the state clearinghouse for the region. And what that means is when there's a project that needs state authorization and licensing, we receive a notice. We also review the county records to get the stance of the county on those projects before sending any information back to the state. We also provide research and guidance to local governments within the region, and we act as an advocate for the region. So the story behind the need for the new facility. The commission has outgrown its current operational space, and we're currently located in Hertford. Our programs are in multiple locations, and consolidation eliminates duplicative expenses through one shared expense. Currently, our workforce development staff are working in common areas and not able to provide a fully private and participant consultation service as is required through the Department of, excuse me, the Division of Workforce Solutions. And many of the commission's events, meetings, and trainings are held off-site because of the lack of space, costing the commission more than $13,000 in rental, staff coordination time, travel, and setup each year. And the commission's current facility has multiple environmental issues, including non-toxic mold and allergens, and as you know, are issues for employees that work for the commission. So what are the facts? The facility, we've conducted a facility analysis of our current space, also looked at leasing and new construction. And conclusion, the commission's new facility will not exceed 17,000 square feet. And since sending this into the county, I just want to provide you an update, is that on Friday, we had the opportunity to meet with state representatives following the senior luncheon to discuss what the needs are for the Divisional Workforce Solutions and for their Elizabeth City office. So that is one of the options that we're looking at in regards to space needs. The current space needs for the commission, our current facility, we have with our storage and additional offices, 10,984 square feet. With the need that we currently have with employees sitting in common areas, sharing an office, and then those employees that have not been hired because we don't have space for them, an additional 4,140 square feet. Our future needs for employees, 1,480 square feet, for a total of 16,604 square feet. And working with our architect, they recommended that we round that up to an even figure of 17,000 square feet. So looking at the financial analysis, we looked at staying in our current facility, leasing a different facility, building a new facility with financing of 20 years, and then building a new facility with financing up to 40 years. And in conversations with the local government commission, I'm going to present you our options and then discuss further why the 40-year option was reviewed and has been reviewed. Our current space, we're currently, the expense for our current facility is $58,625 at a square foot of $5.34. And then looking at square footage, rental of square footage, we did find out on Friday that in some of the spaces in Elizabeth City with a build-out or triple net lease, which the cost of build-out can go down to $6.50. Currently, we're paying $10.50 for the square footage. So a lease for 17,000 square feet with a one-time renovation and design expense and then annual utilities, our first year expense would be $598,000 or a square footage of $35.18. And then year two, that expense would drop to $198,000 or $11.65. Now, the calculation for that is different. As I mentioned, on Friday, we found out with discussing with a commercial realtor, the space that's available, there's a food, old Food Lion Shopping Center and a Walmart Center that, depending on what our needs would be, as well as the needs for the Divisional Workforce Solutions, we could have a build-out expense as well as a rental rate of $6.50 a square foot. But we won't know that exact figure, and which is why I'm here just this evening to provide you information. So additional facts. The commission proposes utilization of $800,000 from the unrestricted $2.1 million fund balance for the project, and we've consulted with our auditor as well as the local government commission on this. And why the $800,000? As you know, it's prudent that you keep working cash in your unrestricted fund balance and looking at how the commission operates. We operate, almost all but one of our programs operates on a reimbursement basis, meaning that the commission pays for the expenses prior to receiving the funds back from the state. And if the commission were to build, the commission would not finance more than $2.2 So currently, the proposed facility is a half-mile south of our current location, and that location is in the Percoyments Commerce Center. And if you'll see, the larger circle designates the proposed, excuse me, the proposed cloverleaf at the intersection of I-87 and Harvey Point Road, and that plan was formally released last week. So the new facility facts, our architect of record is Oakley Collier Architects of Rocky Mount, North Carolina. After going through the RFP process, the design committee recommended Oakley Collier to the full board, and the full board unanimously approved hiring Oakley Collier. And then we'll work with Oakley Collier on the designation of the construction manager at risk and contractor. So looking at the financing, to purchase with a 20-year note at a 3.25% interest rate from USDA, and this is based on a 17,000-square-foot building. It's the cost of a new building at $300,000, a down payment of $800,000, so a total finance amount of $2.2 million. An annual payment of $151,313.54 included in that, we projected $20,000 for utilities, so an annual expense of $171,313.54 or per square footage rate of $10.08. And please note that that is cheaper than what we were originally quoted for leasing a facility in Hertford. And then looking at the long range of 40 years, one of the reasons that we looked at and are looking at the USDA note of 40 years is that because the local government commission requires our counties and the commission to enter into a joint inter-local agreement, anytime that agreement is modified, then the commission needs to come back to all of our counties to modify that agreement. And it was recommended that we go to the longest term of the note without having to come back to our counties to modify. And if you ask the reason why we would want to do that, if for some reason funding was changed or there was difficulties on the federal side and Congress could not agree on the budget, and a good example, workforce development funds were not received until December, we could modify our loan agreement without a penalty with USDA in order to meet our obligations. So looking at the cost of the building, again, $3 million total construction, a down payment from our unreserved fund balance of $800,000. So the total finance is $2.2 million. The annual payment would be $107,050, and annual, again, annual projected utilities of $20,000. So an annual total expense is $127,050 or $7.47 per square foot. So as I mentioned, why is a 40-year option recommended over the 20-year? The commission would not have to assess the counties' fees specifically for the building under the 20-year option, or excuse me, the 40-year option. It's based on what our current dues are and our current operating expenses. And how does this affect the county? One of the things that is required in the inter-local agreement is that over that 40-year term of the loan, that a county will have to remain a member of the Albemarle Commission for the life of the instrument. And let you know, this year is the 49th year of the Albemarle Commission, and you've been members of the Albemarle Commission for 49 years already. And then the county agrees to allow the Albemarle Commission to obtain tax-free financing to construct the facility. And then how does this affect the county? If the commission ceases to exist, the counties within our region may dispose of the property, and the proceeds will divided, be divided proportionately based on per capita dues payments, which are divided by the 70 cents divided by your population, and that will be between county members. And then the commission will pay for the facility from its per capita dues structure without a special assessment to the county. And then the commission will pay for the facility from its federally approved indirect rate. One of the items, when I started three years ago, that the board tasked me with was to study the indirect rate and provide a cost allocation and get the approval from our federal partners, which we had not had in the past. And so our current approved indirect rate, which has been approved by the U.S. Department of Commerce and Economic Development Administration, is approved to not exceed percentage for the administration of the programs. And currently, the programs are charged to 26% versus the federally approved 31% rate. And the 5% balance will be, which is currently allocated to reserves, will assist with paying the note for the new construction of the facility. So what are our next steps? And this has changed a bit as well, since we've had conversations with our county managers as well as our board, that we've slowed down on the process, that the architect will not be presenting a plan at the meeting on Thursday with Albemarle Commission Board. And we continue to respond to questions from our county managers and make presentations just as information only to give you a highlight of what we're doing, what we're thinking, as well as why we need the new facility. And I know your county manager this evening even provided me with additional question, which we'll send on to our attorney this evening. So what are the commission needs? The commission board must also enter into the inter-local agreement with the counties. They did adopt the inter-local agreement at their meeting on August 15th. And I thank you for your support, as always, of the Albemarle Commission, and it's with pride that we serve you, the businesses, and the residents of Currituck County. Do you have any questions?
I have a few, if I can. First, a comment. You had mentioned the privacy at the DWS office. I secret shopped there one time when I was on the workforce development board, and you're right, you can hear every single thing that goes on in there. People are listening to your conversations. It's very, when you're in there looking for a job, you really, it's very uncomfortable, very uncomfortable situation, so I understand that. You're saying that building and owning the property versus renting it is $18,000 less per year? Is that correct?
That is correct. In the initial conversations that we had with the Divisional Workforce Solutions on Friday afternoon, they are willing to pay a portion of the lease based on what their needs are if we decide to go a lease option instead of construction.
Who owns the building when it's paid for?
The Albemarle Commission's members, which it will be titled under the Albemarle Commission, but the Albemarle Commission is owned by our 10 county members.
Over 40 years, you, obviously you're going to remodel at some point. Where does that cost figure in, or how would that get paid for?
That would be through capital improvement project fund that we would set up through our general budget, just as a county does through their general operations budget.
So will it be set up as a lease? When you have the new facility, will you be leasing it to yourself? So would it be like repairs that have to be done or paid for by Albemarle Commission, or are they, how does that work?
If it's in regards to a lease, if we're doing a triple net lease, which means the owner or the landlord of the building pays for the expenses, that's a part of the lease.
And the landlord would be the Albemarle Commission?
Correct.
Okay. If the Albemarle Commission disbanded for some reason, would the fund balance that's remaining go toward the remaining debt on the building?
The, what would happen is the building would be sold because it's collateral for the loan, and if there's a remaining balance, then it's the Albemarle Commission's obligation to utilize its fund balance to pay off its debt service first, prior to any expense going to the county members.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Man, you covered it all.
I have a question. When I was looking through your, how you were figuring out how much it costs for you to operate now by renting, you said that you'll pay $13,000 for outside meetings.
Correct.
So you would not have outside meetings anymore if you have a new building?
We would, we would host those meetings internally. One of the options that we requested from the architects is looking at a flex meeting space and training center within our current facility.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I back up? Do you just still have the two facilities, one in Hertford and one in Elizabeth City, or are there other facilities that would come there as well, or would those further south stay in operation?
We actually have two facilities in Hertford, and our rural planning organization is in a separate facility. And then the headquarters of the Albemarle Commission, up until two years ago, we actually had three facilities. And then we would combine the two facilities in Hertford with the one facility in Elizabeth City.
Okay. So any services you currently provide in the further south counties would come to?
No, they would stay in their current location.
Okay.
Because it's imperative for the...
Has to be close to...
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, Ms. Davidson, a couple of questions that have been posed to me is, if we purchase or lease a building, will the counties, the additional funding that is paid, will that take away from the agencies and what they provide, the services? Will that, will that take away from having a more expensive building or facility?
Absolutely not. One of the reasons why we looked at the options, and we've been, in essence, banking 5% for the last three years of our indirect rate, is so we could build that cushion to do a down payment while not affecting the services of the programs and programs of the Albemarle Commission, is obviously the services are so much more important than a facility.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Did I understand, how many total workers, employees are going to be in that facility?
Just with the Albemarle Commission, there will be 26 employees. But if we do a joint facility with the Divisional Workforce Solutions, currently, they have 11 employees, and then five additional workforce or workforce-related partners that utilize their facility in Elizabeth City.
So the 17,000 square feet is for how many employees?
It would, for 26 currently, and that's with new construction. And until Friday, we did not know the exact number of the employees and partners for workforce development, so they're not included in the space analysis.
Because, you know, there's, I've done work. I wasn't in the band, but, actually, I guess I wasn't in the band. But, you know, when you do facilities analysis, there's typically standards that are associated with office space per employee, and that's how we typically build out or decide how much office space or operational space are necessary for a squadron, for example. That's over 500 square feet a person, which I will tell you...
That's over five hundred square feet a person, which I will tell you, in the, you know, most analysis, that's, a president of a corporation is typically allotted as an executive four hundred square feet. That's a lot of space per person.
Exactly. And if you look at the space analysis, one of the things, the average space is a hundred and eighty square feet per employee. We were provided additional information. Unfortunately, the state requires just a little bit more than that, but the average space that we looked at per Albemarle Commission employee was a hundred and eighty square feet. And then, storage, as well as shared training space. Much of that space is the shared space, as well as training space, that would be allotted within the facility.
If you take twenty-six people, you round it up to two hundred, right? That's fifty-two hundred square feet. That means you have twelve thousand square feet, roughly, of common space, storage space, and other space, which, I mean, I clearly don't understand how all the space is used, but that seems massively excessive from, and I don't, maybe this isn't the venue for this discussion, but that just seems to be excessive, based on every government facility I've ever worked in or on or had in sight too. Anyway, my observation.
Your total number of employees with Albemarle Commission and workforce development is only twenty-six?
No.
No, the current number of employees that, based on the analysis, that would be at the facility would be twenty-six. Currently, we have thirty-two, and that's combination of offices. Currently, we have thirty-two employees. We have additional need, current need right now for four, and then, future need for six. So up to forty-two employees would be housed in that facility.
Now we're getting closer to the square footage.
Yeah.
I understand. So at full build-out, you have forty-two employees, not twenty-six?
Four hundred square feet.
Right. Okay. It's a lot, yeah.
Good.
Well, he pretty much touched on what I was thinking, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, but thank you very much for coming and presenting to us tonight, and with the additional information that was provided, some of us, right before the meeting tonight, and what you gathered on Friday, will have another discussion, because the Albemarle Commission does meet on Thursday, so we'll discuss that further with our counterparts. But certainly appreciate you coming and presenting to us, and just keep up the great work. I know you have tough days, but most of them are good days, though.
All I say is, even though I'm not originally from here, this is home, and it's great to be in northeast North Carolina, providing the services to our residents and businesses.
And also, do you want to touch real quick on the superstars and the November meeting while you're here?
Absolutely. Have to thank Currituck County again for hosting us for our annual meeting, and if you'll recall, last year, your county manager was named manager of the year. And we're taking nominations again this year for managers, for planning partners, for aging partners, for workforce development partners throughout our region. And applications for those nominations are due to myself by October first, and you all should have received the Monday morning briefing, as well as an update for the nominations with the nomination packet. And we look forward to receiving your nominations, as well as your participation at our annual meeting.
What's the date on that, Kathy?
It is November sixteenth.
At our extension center.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, public hearing in action, PV fifteen dash twenty-six, Currituck County, request for use permit to expand the existing Panther Landing Convenience Center located on Panther Landing Road in Moyoc, tax map fourteen parcel thirteen B, Moyoc Township. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chairman, this is the county's application for a use permit, so it's a little bit unusual that you'd be considering the county as an applicant. As the attorney for the county, I'll be calling witnesses to present evidence to meet the minimal requirements for you to make findings and determine whether the use permit should be issued. I would suggest, however, that to begin the hearing, that you would call anyone who intends to testify to come forward and be sworn.
Thank you. At this time, anyone that's going to speak on this issue, please come forward to be sworn in. Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
The county would then call Laurie LaCicero and ask that she present the staff analysis after identifying her position with Currituck County for the record.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. My name is Laurie LaCicero, and I'm the Planning Director for Currituck County. To give some background information on this project, I think it started fall of two thousand and fifteen, and this is the property that's located on Panther Landing Road. It's the corner of Tolls Creek Road and Panther Landing Road. This will be an expansion to the existing Panther Landing Convenience Center. It is located on a sixty-seven point seven seven acre parcel owned by Shepherd Smith. On the part on the map in front of you, it's in the lower right-hand corner of this larger parcel. This is an aerial photo of the property that the convenience center is located on. I'm going to give a little bit of context for this property. The zoning of the surrounding area is single-family mainland, and across the road is some agriculturally-zoned properties. And this is the Moyoc Small Area Plan. This is, once again, the context. It is limited service for this property and for the property neighboring properties. There's rule across the street, and to the north is a little bit of conservation. So the county currently leases just under an acre, point eight seven acres of this property for the Moyoc Convenience Center, the Panther Landing Convenience Center. And we are requesting to expand that lease area, just under a half an acre, point four seven acres on that. The total area will be one point three four acres. The new expansion, it will provide a new traffic pattern. The cars will be coming in to the north. It will be a one-way in and a one-way out. It will also provide for two compacters and three bulk waste containers. So this is the new traffic pattern that it is going to supply. It's going to, we're going to move the entrance to the north to allow more stacking off of Tolls Creek Road, and then, there will be one, then it'll be looping through, and then, out down the southern entrance. So the existing land use around this area to the north is agricultural, to the south is residential and undeveloped, to the east is agricultural and undeveloped, and to the west is residential. And we have a need for this expansion, because we are seeing significant growth in the Moyoc area. This did come before the technical review committee, and the technical review committee did recommend that the chain link fence to be proposed along the new expanded area that matches the existing fences, the fence, along with a type D buffer, which is our most intense buffer to screen the expansion area. The technical review committee suggested that the caliper inches of the existing canopy trees be sustained through the addition, so that we would have significant screening there. And this still will have to be approved by the technical review committee, once the final, once the site plan is finalized. The infrastructure there, there is existing county water here. There is no sewer proposed, no new buildings are being proposed at this time. There will be, the existing shed will be moved. The lighting is going to be all full cutoff fixtures. There's going to be one existing parking, and there will be no riparian buffers on this property. So this was, was heard by the planning board. This use permit was heard by the planning board prior to the change that we've made that eliminated that step in the use permit process. And the planning board did recommend approval of this use permit. So that's my, that's staff report. Are there any questions about?
Just to establish for the record, is a convenience center a use that is permitted in an SFM zoning district?
Yes, it is permitted with a use permit, convenience center, as a county's facility is permitted in the SF, the single-family mainland zoning district.
And does this proposed use conform with the policy provisions of the county's land use plan?
It does.
How so?
The Moyoc Small Area Plan classifies this property as limited service, and the following policies support this use. Policy IS two, it meets the infrastructure and service needs of the community at appropriate levels, as the community continues to focus growth and public investment in areas identified as activity centers. Moyoc is a growing area. And then, policy Future Land Use One, this promotes compatibility between new development and existing development to avoid adverse impacts to existing communities. We're expanding a use that is already there. And this is achieved through designs that includes larger setbacks, landscaped or forested strips, transition zones. This, we will be screening and landscaping this area. It also is in harmony with the land use plan, the two thousand and six land use plan, policy SW seven, Currituck County Waste Convenience Collection and Recycling Centers shall continue to be designed, located, improved, and maintained to facilitate their use, to facilitate their use.
And what impact, if any, do you expect this convenience center to have on the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities?
I think this will increase their ability to provide adequate public facilities as far as the convenience centers. Once again, we're expanding this use, so that there will be more areas for citizens to recycle, to do their bulk waste, to compact, to have a compact of garbage. But it should not impact other county services, such as, should not impact the schools, should not impact our ability to provide law enforcement or EMS services.
I don't have any further questions of this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McCree.
Pam, if I could ask, I see when you said the full cutoff fixtures, one of the things that I hear a lot of times when things are expanded or new businesses are put in there is, everybody says, oh my God, this huge amount of light is going to be there. And these fixtures are actually going to aim down, they're not, it's just going to be like driving into a parking lot at Walmart or something like that, these are going to be-
These are, yes, they will be aimed down. And so they will be able to direct the light on to the area and not, you know, broadcast throughout the, throughout the-
I wanted to confirm that, because I know that's one of the concerns I hear from every time somebody says something's being expanded or new things being built. Thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. LaCicero? Mr. McCree, if you could call your next witness?
I might ask also, you might inquire whether there's anybody in opposition to this application, and if so, they would have an opportunity to question Ms. LaCicero as well.
What he said. Is there anyone in opposition to this issue, and would you like to come up and speak to that? Hearing none at this time, we'll keep moving.
If not, the county will call Kathleen Saunders.
My name is Kathleen Saunders. I work for Qua One Associates, and we are doing the site plan submittal for the Moyoc Convenience Center. Laurie gave a good overview of the project. I'll speak more to the engineering aspects of it. The expansion is just over an acre, and we will be providing landscaping, lighting, and the development will increase the compactors on site. We'll have two additional compactors and three additional bulk containers. As far as engineering aspects, we are providing the type D landscape buffer. We have a twenty-five foot buffer on the western and southern sides, and then, we have a ten-foot landscape buffer on the northern side. The site will go through technical review, and a parking space is designated for the single employee on site as required by the UDO. And we will also be providing lighting on site. Lighting plan has been created, and it's been submitted to the county, and it will be reviewed, in response to your other question. It looks like the foot candles will be kept within the threshold as required at the boundaries of the site, within the lease area. And to speak to the health and safety, and not endangering the public, the traffic patterns coming up to the site will actually be improved, since we are shifting the entrance further away from Tolls Creek Road, which is a more heavily-traveled road. This will allow for additional stacking within Panther Landing Road for cars that are going into the convenience center. In addition, as Laurie mentioned, we will be changing from a two-way into a one-way, so this will help the circular pattern flow within the solid waste center. And it also helps the public health and safety, because it gives us a single place to put all of our solid waste instead of other places.
Ms. Saunders, for the record, if you please would testify us to your educational background?
Okay, I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Virginia Tech. Been in the engineering field since two thousand and five.
And do you hold any licenses?
Professional engineer as well in Virginia, as well as North Carolina.
Do you hold any other professional licenses or credentials as an engineer?
No, just a lot of certificates.
I don't have any further questions of this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. Does anyone else have any questions?
Yes, you talked about extra compactors. One of the things in going to that more excite, I've seen on multiple occasions, is bulk waste oil. When these people come in and get rid of the oil from their cars, whatever, there's one container thing there, and many times, I've seen gallon jugs stacked and stacked and stacked. Are we putting a second one there to carry this overflow?
So we are adding two compactors and then, three bulk waste areas.
But I'm talking about the oil. I mean, not bulk, that's the containers that come and go. I'm talking about the one that actually where they get rid of their oil. There's only one there now, and other sites in the county have two. Have we looked at possibly putting a second one there?
I think that-
I mean, because when I go in there and I see stacks and stacks of gallon containers left there, and, or it's maxed out, I mean, we've got to look at something there, is that something that we can add?
I think we could take that into consideration with the technical review for the site plan that's coming.
Hey, Mike and Dan, wasn't that because we had a contractor that was in dispute and wasn't picking it up? If I, I mean, if I remember correctly, the problem-
That's swear, swear in Mr. Scanlon, if he's going to answer questions.
Oh, never mind, I withdraw my question.
My just big concern is, I've seen other sites that have two, and I'd rather be safe than sorry.
Okay, that's something we can look at with the county when we go through the site plan process.
Any further questions for Ms. Saunders? Thank you, Ms. Saunders.
The county calls Stephen Craddock.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Stephen Craddock. I live at one oh two Hickory Hill Drive in Grandy, North Carolina.
Ms. Craddock, would you please explain to the board your educational background and any state licenses or other credentialing that you hold?
I attended Elizabeth City State University, majoring in mathematics, a second major in computer science, and a minor in Spanish. I am a certified real estate appraiser in the state of North Carolina, as well as Virginia. I'm also a licensed electrical contractor in North Carolina, and I hold the CDA designation for appraisers by the North Carolina Professional Appraisers Coalition, and a couple of other designations. Also, I'm a certified distance education instructor.
And how long have you been a certified appraiser?
For a total of fifteen years appraising.
And you are familiar with and have appraised properties within Currituck County?
I sure have.
And in particular, within the Moyoc area?
Many. Many.
Okay. And you are familiar then with this particular piece of property as opposed to this use permit hearing tonight?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Would you please describe to the board how it is that you're familiar with this property?
I was requested by the county of Currituck to perform an analysis, a study so to speak, about the possible effect, what may occur with the expansion of this convenience center. And the name of my company is Appraise NC for you Incorporated. We're located in Grandy. And what we did was, we studied the trends, the market trends in the Moyoc area. We also studied other areas that had convenience sites such as Gates, Camden, Proquemis County, and looked at comparisons of the activities surrounding those areas as well. And we did not find that this would cause a negative effect by the expansion of the current site.
Okay. And so, the type of study that you performed is an effect study, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what is an effect study versus any other type or form of appraisal?
An effect study is based on the activity that is happening in a market relevant to construction. It is not an appraisal where we do not give a market value for a particular property, but it, it looks at the trends that are happening historically and currently in a given area to determine whether or not any construction, like the proposed construction here, the expansion would cause a negative effect.
And so, then do you have an opinion satisfactory to yourself and, and industry standards as to whether the issuance of this use permit for a convenience center at this location would have any effect on the value to a budding or adjoining property?
I do.
And what is that opinion?
I have come to the conclusion that this will not negatively affect the abutting or adjacent properties. During our study, we started out with a quarter mile radius and looked at that particular market within one quarter mile of the convenience center, then expanded the search area out to a half a mile distance, and then finally a one mile radius from the convenience center. And what we were looking for was what type of trends were occurring prior to PB 1526 and what is happening right now at the moment. And the analyses of these trends gave us the formulation that we came to the conclusion that there would be no negative impact. As a matter of fact, as since February 24, 2016 versus now, the last date of my inspection was 9/8/17, that there's actually been increases of value and absorption rates have increased in the Moyoc township as well. So Moyoc is thriving at the moment and has been and appears to will continue to move forward.
And you prepared a, a report or appraisal for this hearing tonight?
I prepared a report for the study. This was not an appraisal.
Okay. I'm sorry, for the study. And so then the county, Mr. Chairman, we move for admission of Mr. Craddock's study as applicant's exhibit number one for the record.
I'll allow it.
And that's all the questions I have from Mr. Craddock.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Craddock?
Mr. Craddock, I just have one question. As like the Cypress Landing development has been developed, when those homes are sold or platted, they are required to disclose that there is a refused site or recycling center close by, is that correct?
Not to my knowledge. They are not required. I'm not a Realtor. I'm not an agent in real estate. I'm an appraiser. So I can't speak specifically with absolute whether that is true or not, but to the best of my ability and knowledge, I believe that is incorrect. They do not have to disclose that.
But with the engineering and the fencing and the enclosure, that helps the appraisal?
Absolutely. On the, the two dates of inspection where I actually physically went to the site and I looked at the interior of the site as well as exterior and took photos, and you'll notice that within the report that I've given you all, is that that station is a very clean station. It's hardly noticeable because of this great buffer zone that exists currently around the existing site. And later with this buffer zone, it will continue that trend as well. So it won't be very visible from any direction.
Well, for someone who uses that facility at least once a week, I'm excited about garbage and I hate to say that, but this is, this is definitely a good positive thing for the Moyoc citizens.
I agree. And as Moyoc's population continues to grow, the demand for affordable housing is going to continue. Our population will continue to grow and the need for more convenience centers and the expansion of this convenience center is very relative to the population. And that would be in the county's best interest, in my own personal opinion, as a human being as well as an appraiser, that it would be logical to expand this site.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Craddock.
Thank you.
That's the county showing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. With that, I'll open the floor for a motion. Excuse me, I'm sorry. With that, I'll open the public hearing. I currently have Ms. Saunders and Ms. Perry signed up for the public hearing. Did you wish to speak again? Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during the public hearing that has not signed up? With that, I'll close the public hearing and open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the expansion. This will not endanger the public health or safety. The use will not injure the value of joining or abutting lands and be in harmony with the area which is included. The use will be conforming with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans and the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including but not too limited, schools, fire, rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities. Actual state standards, guidelines shall be followed in determining when public facilities are adequate.
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to new business, Corolla Jeep Rentals and Tours, appeal of outdoor tour operator license suspension. With that, if anyone that's going to speak on behalf of this issue, could you please come forward and be sworn in? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, first of all, let me explain to the board and to the general public what this proceeding is about. Corolla Jeep Rentals and Tours has received two citations for violations of the county's outdoor tour operator ordinance. And as a consequence, as required by the ordinance, was therefore suspended for three days of operation. There is a provision in, in the ordinance at section 8-100, which is on the last page of the ordinance copy that has been provided to you, that provides for an appeal hearing before this body from the suspension of a license. And that's to, to occur at the next regularly scheduled commissioner meeting following the receipt of the appeal statement, which was received from Corolla Jeep Rentals and Tours last week. You sit, and in my opinion, you need to sit as a quasi judicial body and that's why you've sworn in witnesses to receive evidence under oath. But also, you hear the appeal de novo. De novo means that, that you are hearing this appeal new and fresh. So you are not bound by any determination which may have already been made by county staff in coming to its conclusion that there has been a violation of the ordinance necessitating a suspension of this company's license. You may further, as provided by the ordinance, take any action that the county staff could take in rendering its decision. So you, you may determine that there is not sufficient evidence such that a suspension should be upheld and the issuance of citations upheld. You may affirm the issuance of the citations and the suspension. You may determine when a suspension shall take place. So that is all within your authority as provided for by the ordinance. My understanding is that Commissioner White would like to be and believes he should be recused from this matter because he is a competitor, I'll say, in this industry. And in order to have no appearance of impropriety or conflict, I certainly believe it would be appropriate for the board to consider recusing Commissioner White from hearing this matter.
At this time, I'll look for a motion to recuse Commissioner White from this issue.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously.
I think then, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that, that you proceed in the following manner, much like you would any other quasi judicial proceeding, that you receive evidence and testimony from the county staff and code enforcement officers involved in this matter, that the board then have opportunity, opportunity to examine each of those county witnesses, that Mr. Meredith, appearing on behalf of his company, Corolla Jeep Rentals and Tours, then have the opportunity to cross-examine those witnesses. Thereafter then, Mr. Meredith have the opportunity to present his case to the board, following which the board would be entitled, of course, to ask questions of him and then to render your decision at the close of the evidence. So again, with that, I would suggest that you hear now from the county staff. Ms. LaCicero, were you going to?
Yes, I'll give a brief staff overview. And we do have the two staff people from the Corolla office here, if you would like to, to speak with them directly. On Thursday, August 31st, Planner 2 Jenny Turner witnessed a Corolla Adventures Hummer heading north on NC 12 with passengers. It did not display the fluorescent pink ID number that is required of our horse tour operators. A citation was emailed to Banks Meredith the following day on Friday, September 1st. On Friday, September 1st, our development technician in Corolla, Nick Ace Thorpe, witnessed a Corolla Adventure Hummer coming onto the beach access ramp. Mr. Ace Thorpe followed the Hummer. It did not have a pink, a fluorescent pink ID number on that, on that vehicle. There were passengers in there and the license plate number was not the proper plate for that vehicle. So another citation was issued and two violations within a third a day period results in, can result in a suspension. So, and you were emailed pictures last Friday of the, of the citation and the vehicles? Are there any questions for me about the brief overview of what transpired?
If I might ask one question in the fact that each citation is $100 or is each citation $50?
I have to-
Reason why I ask is that in reading this, it seems like they each had two violations on each date and we only charged them with one or we just rolled them together? I'm just trying to make sure I'm looking at the right-
It may be appropriate now, after Ms. LaCicero has given a background to have Code Enforcement Officer Turner actually testify as to what she observed and the basis for issuance.
Each citation, I'm sorry. Each citation was $100. $100 for each citation.
And we only charged them two, not, not four?
Right. Two, one for each offense, $100 for each citation.
What I'm reading each one though is, you know, so he has a fine right now of $200, not $400.
Correct.
But I'm seeing that he didn't display the identification and he didn't, he wasn't approved to work as an authorized outdoor vehicle. We didn't charge him with that.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McCree, would it be appropriate this time for Mr. Meredith to?
Yes, all the, I think again, Ms. LaCicero gave a background to, for the board of what this matter's about. I think in order to have substantive, substantive and competent evidence, it'd be appropriate now to move into Ms. Turner and Mr. Ace Thorpe's testimony and at that time have the board and Mr. Meredith the opportunity to cross-examine them.
Okay. At this time, I'll call Ms. Jenny Turner. It's okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Meredith, if you could have a seat. Thank you.
So, on Thursday, August 31st, at approximately 4:00 PM, I did witness a camouflage Hummer with orange Corolla Adventures lettering heading north on Ocean Trail with four passengers. The vehicle did not display the required pink, hot pink, unique identification number on the passenger side that was visible from my angle and that's required. I was located approximately 100 feet from the road when I saw the vehicle traveling north with passengers. So I did email the citation that's in your packet to Mr. Meredith the next day on Friday at 3:06 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
If I may ask a question. Did you have the opportunity to speak to Mr. Meredith about the citation that you issued?
I did not speak to him before I issued the citation.
Did you speak to him afterwards?
Yes. I spoke to him after all citations and suspension was issued.
Okay. And what did he say with regard to the issuance of this citation?
He asked for a break.
I've got an object about that. Didn't ask for a break.
Okay. Well, you did ask for a break.
If I can, Mr. Meredith, Mr. McCree finish asking. Then you can cross-examine.
Did, did he make any statement with regard to whether, and whether he had identification number required by the ordinance on this particular vehicle?
He did not. He didn't say that he, that he had the, the number on there.
Did he say he did not have the number?
I don't recall that he said he didn't have the number either.
Okay. All right. I don't have any further questions.
At this time, Mr. Meredith, would you like to ask Ms. Turner any questions?
Um, no, I'd like to give you my side of the story.
Okay, thank you. If you would, have a seat and I'll, and I'll call Mr. Nick Ace Thorpe.
Oh, actually, I would like to ask Jenny.
We'll let him give his preface and you can ask any questions you might have after that. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thursday afternoon around 4:30 after Jenny saw the tour vehicle, she asked me to go sit at the ramp, realized what time it was and asked me to go sit in the morning. So Friday morning, got into work, got the truck keys, drove up, sat. They were the first tour vehicle to come across, no stickers. Wasn't actually prepared for them to be the first one, so my camera wasn't exactly ready. Got it ready, followed them, got the rear shot, followed about four more minutes, got the side shot, and turned around, went back, sent the pictures to Ms. Turner.
And did you thereafter then issue the citation or did Ms. Turner do that?
Ms. Turner did.
And did you have any conversation with Mr. Meredith regarding the citations or what you observed?
I had a conversation with Dave, one of Mr. Meredith's employees.
Who was Dave? One of his employees?
Yes.
And what, what did you discuss?
He was asking about getting plaques instead of stickers for the vehicle. That was about 9:30.
I don't have any further questions.
I think I also made a site visit around 12:30 to check other tour vehicles at the site. That vehicle was there with no stickers. They had another camouflage vehicle that had all three stickers and one more Jeep with the rear sticker missing.
Any further questions for Mr. Ace Thorpe?
How did you know about the license plate? Was it the correct license plate for the vehicle?
I asked it to be run to check.
And he had the wrong license plate on?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Ace Thorpe.
Thank you.
Mr. Meredith, you can at this time ask Ms. Turner and Mr. Ace Thorpe any questions you may have.
My question for-
Come on up to the podium.
My question for Jenny was, was there any photographic evidence of the first violation? Or anything?
I didn't, I didn't have a picture. I did witness it, but I didn't have a picture. I don't have a picture.
I just like the record to state that there was no physical evidence of the first violation of the first day. And the way I see it, I mean, this is all kind of new to all of us, the regulations that are kind of on the horse tours, but we've been demonized over the years. The violation was the same vehicle two days in a row. So, I mean, I, I hate to come in with guns blazing. I wanted to introduce myself to you guys and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your civic duty that you're providing for Currituck County. And my name is Banks Meredith, by the way, I own Corolla Jeep Rentals and Tours. But it's, it's almost like entrapment. The, the, it's the same, if we get two violations in a 30-day period, we have our permit taken away from us for three days, where we cannot operate for three days. And this happened right before Labor Day weekend. It was actually the Thursday before the weekend, okay? It was actually the Thursday before the weekend, okay? So my one vehicle goes out, and it did, the stickers, they've got, I've got real military AM generals, they've got a powder coating on the outside of them, which makes stickers very hard to stick on, which was a problem, and Jenny and I spoke about this in the beginning, and there was an option to have a metal placard as opposed to the sticker. Well, when Dave, Dave did go in on Friday in the morning to obtain the metal placards, because we noticed, and I'd actually told him, and you can call it human error, or whatever you'd like, but I had asked him two weeks prior to please go to Jenny and get the metal placards to put on that vehicle. And it's late season, I'm sure, but everyone's businesses knows how into August gets, but it was a human error. He didn't go when I asked him to. The license plates were legitimate, they were just on different vehicles, and I can tell you that the only reason I know that happened is because of this coming to light, but I think on Thursday, I probably should have been notified of that violation, which would have taken that vehicle out of my rotation, and I wouldn't have had the violation the second day. So it's pretty much two days, same vehicle, same violation. So if you're going to shut down a business for three days, Labor Day weekend, over the same vehicle, two days in a row, I just feel that, you know, with all this being new, I should have been notified Thursday of the violation, and then the license plate tag being improperly, you know, on the wrong vehicle would have come to light, and I would only had one violation in the 30 days. So I'm having a hard time understanding how they saw it one day with no physical evidence, and then the very next day, you know, they come out there and get their physical evidence. I mean, I'm a law-abiding citizen, and I really, I run a legitimate business, I have for 25-plus years, and the last thing I would do is jeopardize my business, my customers, or anything like this. I'm not going to assure you that. That's really all I have to say.
Mr. Meredith, if I can, when the regulations came out, is that new this year?
Uh, as far as the stickers?
Yes, sir.
Uh, no, no.
How long has that been in place?
Uh, two years.
Two years?
Two or three, three years? Two years.
Okay. Did you understand the rules when, when all the changes were put in?
Yeah, no.
And you had buy-in into the, into what the rules would be, and what the consequences would be if they weren't followed?
Yes, sir, and that vehicle did have the stickers and a valid, oop, and a valid license plate. It's just somehow or another, my crew, I'm going to claim them, you know, let them fall off, didn't go to Jenny to get the metal ones, and somehow or another, took a valid license plate off one vehicle that was broken down, and it ended up on the Humvee that were, that's in question.
Right, so your crew knowingly did that?
What's that?
Your crew knowingly did that.
I don't, I don't think it was knowingly...
They knowingly took a plate off of one vehicle and put it on another plate?
Well, one vehicle broke down, so my way of not letting them try to move it or start it is to take the plate off. So I actually had the plates off both vehicles, because they were both broken down at the time, and I mistakenly gave them the wrong one. I mean, I guess I can take the blame myself.
Any further questions for Mr. Meredith?
Mr. Meredith, how many vehicles do you have permitted under your permit for your use?
Five vehicles.
Okay, so every vehicle that you have on your site is allowed under your permit?
Yes, ma'am.
So each one, you have numbers and valid license for each one?
Yes.
And both those vehicles were valid?
I thought I saw in the evidence, or in the case that was presented, that the license plate was not assigned to a vehicle that was allowed to be a tour. Did I misread that?
No, it says it.
You're correct.
Jenny?
It's not that it wasn't assigned to an allowable vehicle, it was that it was not on the correct vehicle. It was a license plate for a GMC that was on the Hummer, which is why the statement on the citation is there, and the statement in the memo says that the license plate was not the proper plate for the vehicle.
Okay, so the license plate that was on the Hummer went to a GMC that was also broken. I understand you had two Hummers, right? I thought, what I heard you say, was they were both broken.
The GMC was the broken-down vehicle. That one did have a problem the day before, which is why the plates came off, and there were two plates, you know, not on vehicles, but what happened was, is the GMC tag went on the Hummer as opposed to the proper one. So that's, that's really where I think the problem came in.
And the GMC is, is an authorized vehicle also?
It was, yeah, it was. It was just not, the license plate was not, was on the Hummer without the stickers, which, speaking to his point earlier about the two citations, when we saw that the next day, it was like, something's off, like the vehicle, the license isn't correct either, so.
Were both of the license, though, good?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, why would you take the license off the car?
The one that broke down, or was broken down, the GMC, the rough life out there on the beach, the bumper is actually off of the vehicle, so it was kind of haphazardly on. So I do it as a practice to keep them from driving the vehicles, moving them, starting them up when I'm working on them, because I've got a crew that likes to jump in vehicles when I'm halfway...
You can't take the key out?
I could do that. Depending on the depth of the work, you know, they might need to move them around or something. I honestly, that was human error with the license plate. They were both valid vehicles, and Deputy Price came out the following day, Friday, and ran all the, all the numbers on the plates, and assured Jenny that, you know, they were all legal vehicles. It was just a, I won't say a common mistake, but a mistake nonetheless. But I did, my problem is with the whole kind of system, and obviously, like Bruce and everybody on House's work, and it's all new, is if, if I had have been enlightened on the first citation Thursday of the stickers not being on, that would be, that would be one citation, correct? Just being out there without stickers on, so that's one citation. Now, instead of her contacting me Thursday evening, or even Friday morning, you know, they go out Friday and follow my vehicle around, and then decide to give it another citation. So it was, had it have been brought to my attention, I wouldn't have...
Do you guys do any kind of a walk-around before you get in the truck and haul our tourists up and down the beach?
I normally, I do all the maintenance on the vehicles, and I, you know, I'm there in the morning when everything's being fueled up, and checking oil, and all that good stuff, but as far as late, I've got...
Well, I understand, I mean, I understand people, right? But, you know, I mean, again, I would think your operators, right, who are about to get in a vehicle, right, and become legally responsible for the safe transport of our visitors up and down the beach, that they do a walk-around before they get in the vehicle and drive. We, I know we conduct training on how to drive around the horses, right? I'm pretty sure your folks have to go through that training in order to be signed off and be allowed to haul the horses up and down the beach. I would think part of that whole training, and I don't know for a fact, because I haven't sat through it, but is you're required to be, you know, you've, you've got to have the permit and the stickers stuck on the side of the vehicle. Is that, no, yes? So they're aware of that, and, you know, I'll tell you, I mean, we've, some of us have been on this board for three years now, we were part of the whole thing that approved the permitting process, and we've gotten the emails. Every time a tour operator is perceived to have do, have done anything, I guarantee you, I get the photo evidence and the emails associated with it, right? So from my understanding, most of the tour operators are very careful, A, because it's a lucrative business, and B, because they screw up, there's a price to pay, right? And, you know, to me, the pink stickers is, I mean, in the grand scheme of safety, that bright pink ought to be like step one, and as soon as the first sticker falls off, right, that to me should be a clue that, okay, I need to be paranoid about this, because, again, I get nailed twice, I'm done, right? So I hear you say, you know, I take care of my people, and I make sure everything's right. You've admitted, no, you, no, you didn't. You know, we got the wrong license plate on the wrong vehicle, honest mistake, but we establish a policy with the threat of the hammer, and that's what brings you before us today.
We do have a license plate and three stickers that we're supposed to have on all the vehicles, and like I said before, I did tell Dave, who is my manager, to go get the metal placards when one of these stickers fell off, you know? Personally, I know, as a business owner, I have to take the blame, but, you know, we did neglect to go to Jenny, but before that truck left on Friday morning, he was at your office trying to get the metal placards, wasn't he?
No.
That Friday?
Yeah, he came to you and... He came in after I took the photos. I was up there, he paid in. He got in on that very... Well, he did try to come in after, he told me the county was following him and taking pictures, and I was like, well, it's because of the stickers, and he was like, it must be, and he ran out there and tried to get the stickers, but my whole point is, is if I had have been summoned on the first violation, which would have been Thursday, then all of it would have come to light, I'd be like, oh, that the license plate on the wrong vehicle, and that vehicle would not have gone back out.
Mr. Meredith?
License was the second day.
Sir, you just said that you sent him up there to get the stickers, so you...
On Friday.
Yeah.
Before the second violation happened?
Yeah.
So you knew on Thursday?
That you had violated.
Hold on, folks, if I can, let's, let's, let's narrow it in a little bit. Again, let's keep just the question and answers, not speculation or anything like that. Mr. Meredith, I have a question for you. You stated that you go around your vehicles every day. So if you went around your vehicle Thursday and didn't notice you had the wrong plate on there, and the stickers are missing, and then you went around your vehicle again on Friday and didn't notice it, and you've been doing this for 25 years, how could you possibly miss that?
Now, I've got five, five vehicles moving, and it's late season. I mean, I honestly, I, I think we had one out of the three still on there. I honestly cannot, cannot explain how that happens.
Okay.
If I might, Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir.
We were all pro-business, but if we treated you like a taxi cab, what we would have done was, we would have stopped your vehicle, we'd had everybody get off, we'd have put the vehicle out of service, and the fact it may not have had a plate, it might have had to been towed, but otherwise, there would have been nobody sitting on that vehicle, and we'd send it back to the shop. We didn't put your people off, we didn't make anybody else, so actually, you're treated better than cabs. And it's been two years, not one year, it's not brand new, and I understand where you're coming from, you know, at some point, you know, and I can say this year, I've had more compliments given to me about the horse tour folks than ever before. They said, you guys are trying really hard. So this is actually a very pro year for how they talk about you guys versus the negative. So you guys are trying, but it sounds like here, the ball dropped, and it's like, you're trying to blame everybody else, but it happened.
Any further questions for Mr. Meredith? If, thank you, Mr. Meredith. If I can, I have a question for Ms. Turner. Ms. Turner, when you noticed the violation, were you by yourself?
No, I was not.
Did you have people with you, or other individuals with you?
I was actually standing on the porch of the satellite office with Mr. White.
Bob White?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. White, can I call you up?
Yes, sir.
If you could grab a Bible and put your left hand on it. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Can you tell me what you saw on that Thursday?
I was standing on the front porch at the county offices in Corolla, and just witnessed Mr. Meredith's Humvee come by with patrons and no stickers on it, and I remarked to Ms. Turner that, that I just saw him go by, and that was kind of the end of it, and we had another discussion going, so you guys heard what happened after that from her side of it, so.
Can I ask Mr. White, how big are the stickers that are on the side of the Humvee?
About three or four inches, something like that. They're highly visible.
Okay.
And I think a lot of that was done by design when we, when we met to come up with this stuff, it was so that people could see them, get the number off of it, and report a violation if they needed to, and we could point to a specific vehicle.
Right. Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Meredith, did you have any questions for Mr. White?
I'm blown away, to be honest with you, that a competitor of mine and a commissioner would be sitting on the stoop of the satellite building, and he points it out to the enforcement officer, which would be only one side, and still enough photographic evidence other than to, I mean, I didn't want to come in here point fingers or guns blazing, like I said, but, I mean, I could, I went out the week, Monday after, and took pictures of a lot of different violations that were going on.
Mr. Meredith, we're not, we're not here to discuss those other issues, we're here to discuss your issue. If you could, please.
I do have a question for Mr. McCree. The purpose of swearing in a witness is not, you know, as I understand, legal evidence and testimony is presented, that's the purpose, swearing in a witness before testimony is given. As I understand, evidence, it can be physical, but there is no requirement to have, for example, a photographic quote-unquote evidence to prove the testimony of someone who was duly sworn as they presented. Is that correct?
That's correct. Certainly, the observation of a witness can be confident substantive evidence and relevant to the issue before the board. It is for you, as the finder of fact, to make a determination as to whether the testimony is trustworthy or credible.
And that evidence that is observed in the first person, that is the person that sees it, is considered to be legitimate versus I heard or someone told me, which would be hearsay?
Which would be hearsay, that's correct.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the microphone. When I was with Mrs. Turner, it was in capacity as Bob White Commissioner. I was there for the same presentation we saw this afternoon, speaking with people. When I was talking to her outside, again, it was as Commissioner Bob, we were talking about the sidewalk, Greenway Pass, and Corolla. So my intent, Mr. Meredith, was never to harm you in any way, shape, or form. Had I wanted to do that, I could have done that, and any time prior to that, when this vehicle was being used. So I just want to clear the air on that.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any further questions for Mr. White?
No, but I have one for Mr. Meredith.
Okay, Mr. Meredith, if you may.
If you'll come on up to the microphone. You said this is, the stickers came off on the 31st, or is this, was that the first event that you've had stickers come off your vehicles?
That is one of the first times I've had the stickers come off.
Okay, so throughout the whole summer, you didn't have any issues with stickers coming off of your vehicles?
No, I haven't on any of the others.
But this one particular vehicle is the only one that has the carbon paint, or whatever it is?
No, no, they all have it, but for some reason, most of them held up, and these didn't.
So were you planning on coming to get metal plates prior to this event? So were you planning on coming to get metal plates prior to this event?
I had asked my manager, everybody's running low on fuel come Labor Day, hate to say it, and not thinking clearly, including myself. And I had asked him about a week or two prior to make sure he goes and gets those placards and stickers.
So with that being said, you anticipated them coming off?
Well, one had come off.
Okay, so prior to the 31st, you've had that issue?
Yeah, one.
Okay, so you were aware that, that they would come off and that that is kind of your ticket or permission to operate, correct?
I, I did know that one sticker came off.
Okay, so, so you know what the policies are and, and what the procedures are and the guidelines that, that you're supposed to follow to operate, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't know that one, you know, if one sticker came off, I figured I'd be in, somebody from the county would tell me as opposed to just finding me. But I mean, I, I would have taken care of it had it been brought to my attention.
You were familiar prior to this event?
I was.
Thank you.
Any further questions or testimony? At this time, um, I will ask the board to make a decision to uphold the citations or to accept Mr. Meredith's appeal.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, um, accept the, um, guidelines or the, um, citations.
Citations?
Citations.
Might be in the form of that, that you would, um, motion to affirm the, the staff's issuance of citations in this instance, and the suspension of the license for a period of three days is provided by the ordinance. And then you may want to make a determination as to what three days the, the license will be suspended.
Mr. McCree, could we do the three days next year at the same time?
I think you have that ability, yes.
The same dates.
The same dates.
Then that will be my motion, what you said, for the, um.
Okay. All right, so, so the motion would be?
Keep me legal, okay?
The, 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 the motion would be to, to affirm staff's issuance of citations, findings of violation and issuance of citations, um, and suspension of the license for Corolla, uh, Jeep rentals and tours for a period of three days. Uh, those days of suspension to be, I guess, uh, if you look at what the dates would be for next year.
I believe the dates might change a little bit, Mr. McCree. I think the intent was to not, was to give him the suspension during the weekend where he was probably slower. So I think next year, those dates would probably change a little bit, but in that direct timeframe would be appropriate.
So, so, so equivalent dates as to when, when the suspension would have been effective this year?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Saturday, Sunday, Monday. All right. Do we need? That'd be the motion I would suggest.
And I will make that motion to what you said and make the dates be, um, I'm looking at the 18 calendar, the 29th, 30th, and 31st of August of 18. Let's say Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
I think the intent was to try to, um, his original, um, suspension was over a weekend when he was slower.
Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Saturday, Sunday, and a Monday. Middle of the week is when they do their.
So we want to make the suspension that weekend?
Yes, ma'am.
So the August 31st, 1st, and 2nd of September, or excuse me, of August of 18?
I would look for a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on, resolution supporting the repeal of the 80% tax credit for the solar array facilities. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the board has asked for a resolution to be drafted for your consideration. Uh, the issue is this, uh, as you know, there was a tax credit available to renewable energy, um, development in North Carolina. Um, the North County Journal Assembly repealed that tax credit. However, there still remains, uh, as part of the law, uh, that counties may only tax, particularly as it relates to solar array facilities, only 20% of the assessed valuation of those facilities in a county. Um, and so what this resolution is asking is that our legislative delegation introduce and support legislation to repeal, as it, as the Journal Assembly did with the state tax credit, repeal, uh, basically the credit, uh, given to solar array facilities as it relates to county, uh, tax assessed valuation. Um, the resolution sets forth, uh, back at the time that our previous economic development director sent a letter to the Journal Assembly asking the very same thing, uh, what, what the tax value was of solar arrays that were already existing in the county. Uh, I think, Mr. Chairman, you, you got some information today as to actually what the tax value or tax dollars would equate, uh, to, to Currytuck County were this particular statute repealed.
That's correct. The, uh, tax total was, is a $355,000 difference.
And so the bottom line is that if it was good enough for the state of North Carolina to determine that the renewable energy, uh, industry is able now to stand on its own as it relates to North Carolina taxes and tax credits, uh, then likewise, the same consideration and recognition should be given to these, this type of development, uh, within a county.
Mr. McCree, when was this, uh, put in place, this tax credit put in place? What year? Do you know that?
Um, I do not know right offhand when the tax credit was put into place. It was January 1, 2016, and set forth in the resolution when the Journal Assembly repealed the state tax credit. But yet continued to allow for a county credit, um, since then.
Thank you, Mr. McCree.
Uh, Mr. McCree, if I could, do we know if, uh, North Carolina Power gets any type of tax credit like this? Or do they pay the regular tax for whatever land they have their, uh, equipment on?
I do not know right offhand what the tax, uh, I don't know if the county manager knows right offhand.
I didn't know if they got a tax break like the solar does. Okay.
Any further questions for Mr. McCree? This time I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve?
Aye, seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on, consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Any discussion?
I have one question. On the antennas, and this is to the county manager, um, the one item on the antennas, this is just an increase and enhancement to what's already there as far as replacing it, and, and that should help the frequency, correct?
That's correct.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to Commissioner's report. Commissioner Hall. Time's up.
Mr. White? Four out of ten, you're all a tough crowd.
Drop mic.
Uh, this past week, they had the senior awards banquet. I wasn't able to attend this year after sitting in the board for a couple of years. But the week prior, Rain Perry, who was 96, passed away. She was a regular at the Powell's Point Senior Center. She'd received several awards for the amount of hours. And these are hours when she was in her 90s, folks. She's out there, she's part of what made Currytuck great. And I appreciate the folks like Ms. Perry. And I had a chance to attend her funeral. I was asked by Pastor Wilder at the, um, and I want to thank them for inviting me because I'll tell you what, I felt very welcome when I went down there and I got to meet some more of her family after I talked to her several occasions prior before Ms. Perry passed away. And again, for all you seniors that are out there, thank you because you've given us our future, you've given us our past. Thank you.
Mr. White?
I've got nothing this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Beaumont?
Nada.
Ms. Etheridge?
Nothing.
I know you have lots to say, so I'd give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're very welcome. I'm learning.
I want to, I, I just want to, um, say that I attended the Heritage Day, um, event on Saturday, and it was just an overwhelming event with the community coming together. With the way that the world is right now, we needed some community, um, building and, and just the commissioners that were present, um, Mr. Beaumont, Ms. Etheridge, and, um, Mr. Hennig, who, um, participated in the People's Choice Award. That, that was an opportunity to give back to the children of Currytuck because Currytuck Kids was the recipient of those funds. And that event raised almost $1,000 to go back to the children of Currytuck County. So I just want to thank those of you, um, on being on the Board of Trustees of the Currytuck Kids. Thank you, um, your efforts were just outstanding. And, um, and also with Mr. Beaumont's family that joined us, um, to make up the team. So I just want to thank everybody for that. But it was just an outstanding event. Um, the weather couldn't have been perfect, so, you know, the good Lord, thank you for planning that day. But I just, I just think it was an outstanding event and, um.
And Commissioner Gilbert, the other thing I think that would be prudent or appropriate is an official, uh, thank you to Southern Meat Packing. From what I understand, they donated the meat that was prepared as part of that and , uh, the competitors in the barbecue competition who actually prepared the, these samples that were given out. So, um, you know, I, it, again, I, I was, I'm sorry, I, uh, cooked last year and, and was appropriately schooled by the companies that do that for a living. But, uh, yeah, I, they, they helped our community and, and they too deserved to thank.
And it just piggy, piggybacks to what, um, Commissioner Hall was saying about the volunteers. Um, I too attended that volunteer luncheon on Friday. But we have got so many opportunities in the county that each one of us can give back to, not just financially, but, um, with, with our efforts and our strengths of just helping people and just being kind to one another.
Is it true that I heard that, uh, our chairman was riding a sheep?
Um.
I was overweight.
He tried to get onto, get into the gates to ride the bulls.
They had a weight limit, I couldn't make weight.
But he was wearing a red shirt.
He was the sheep, right?
No, I would be a donkey. Uh, I'm actually going to say something this evening. Everybody relax, it's going to be okay. Uh, everyone talked about volunteers. And I talked about this, uh, I as well went to the volunteer banquet on Friday with the seniors, uh, had a great time, got to see Ms. Etheridge do a little cheer, um, everyone had a great time, the food was great. But it all comes down to volunteers. What makes this county and this country great? And I, and again, I spoke to this on Friday, so if you've heard it, too bad. Um, it's worth reiterating. It's what makes this country great. It's what makes this county great. We volunteered since the beginning of time. We volunteer for everything. Volunteers don't care what color you are, what race you are, they don't care. Um, and that's important. Uh, without volunteers in this county and this country, we wouldn't be this great country or this great county. Um, so, and we see it every single day of our lives, people volunteer. Whether you volunteer to stop on the highway and let a turtle across the street or whatever it is, however small it is, it's important. Um, so remember that and get involved, and let's keep this county great, let's keep this country great. And with that, I'll hand it over to.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would like to invite anyone that, um, would like to come and have dinner at St. Luke's Table tomorrow night from 5:30 to 7:30 to have a spaghetti dinner, and it's donations only. So, um, you won't have to cook a meal, just come join me at St. Luke's Table.
I'm going to give Ms. Gilbert a second to see if she has anything else. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Scanlon, Commissioner's report, our county manager report.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to announce that, and I apologize for short notice, the, but Rite Aid, Rite Aid has put together a public flu clinic. It's at Barco Library, and it's this week on the 22nd, which I believe is Friday. Um, but the general public can go and get a flu shot.
It's the hours?
Um, they would need to contact my office. Right now, I do not know what the hours are.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. At this time, I will call for a motion to adjourn the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
I'll make that motion for you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. We will now enter into a special meeting of the Travel Tourism Authority, and with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, you have two budget amendments in your package for your consideration. Uh, the first one, just like your last meeting, uh, and the, the general county operations, uh, there's certain goods and services that we might purchase or services or, in this particular case, there was some construction work that was done that was not completed by June 30th, um, when those goods or services are received after the end of the budget year. Uh, we do carry forward the budget amounts from last year to this year. So the first budget amendment is actually bringing forward last year budget amounts to this year, um, to pay for those items. So it is not additional money, it's a carry forward of previous year's funds. Uh, the second budget amendment you have in there, uh, I, I think the board or most of the commissioners are aware of an ongoing effort that is being done by the Audubon Society, specifically at the Pine Island Sanctuary, uh, where they are in the process of renovating some existing buildings and building some new structure. It's part of their efforts to open up more of the sanctuary to the general public, um, for education purposes, for artistic purposes, um, and for the general public to enjoy some portion of that sanctuary. Um, the first phase of that project, uh, they needed to raise 1.5 million dollars, and for about the last year, they have been undergoing a fundraising effort. Uh, I met with the, the local director, and they have raised 1.3 million of their target 1.5. Uh, and they're asking the Board of Commissioners if you would like to consider, uh, making a contribution towards, uh, one of the facilities that they will be doing will be actually a public facility that will be open and available for the public use. And so I do think that qualifies under the, your use of OCU tax, um, and you have a budget amendment in your agenda package to support that effort. And I'll be happy to ask questions about either one of those budget amendments. Mr. Scanlon, when, uh, what's the timeframe? Do you know what the timeframe would be? Let's see, we got him. We got somebody back here might actually be able to answer that. We actually have the executive director, I believe, is with us. If you would like specifics, uh, I, I believe, and I'll let him speak for it, but, uh, you know, generating the funds necessary to take the project was, was the goal. And once they have those funds in hands, they can move forward. But, uh, I believe their intention was to move forward immediately with, uh, the first phase as, as soon as the money was raised.
Any further questions for Mr. Scanlon? I will say that, uh, the work they're getting ready to start here and they, the work they've already begun and are getting ready to do is going to be a tremendous asset to Currytuck County and the surrounding area. And, um, I'm excited to see it all turn out and get finished. And with that, open floor for a motion.
Motion to approve?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. I will now call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Thank you all for coming out this evening. Have a good night.